Mr. Moon?
Hello.
Would board members come to the table, please, and then we'll get started? Good evening, everyone. We're going to start this budget work session. The, that is our only agenda item tonight. And our goal today is to answer any board member questions before we consider our budget next week, as well as to discuss any amendments that any board member may have tonight to discuss or may be contemplating, so we can all be aware of any board member amendments that we'll be considering next week. Dr. Brabham, would you like to start us off and give us a summary of where we are, and then we can start a conversation? I do have, I am seeing the lights, so if somebody wants to put their lights on to speak, I will be watching for that as well.
Well, thank you, Chairman Evans. I'm learning as we go this year. I understand this is the work session prior to the next school board meeting where we'll approve the advertised budget, and it's an opportunity for school board members to ask us questions. I know we had a few questions that were asked, and perhaps we can share a little bit of that information with you now and see if there's any additional questions to that. So I'm going to let Susan Quinn and Marty Smith and others, as necessary, respond to some of the things that were already shared with us, and then we'll see if there's additional questions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we respond to any questions, I did want to share with the board that we did update last Monday's presentation to include some of the next steps from that work session. So on Slide 7 of the presentation that's posted, it does provide your total compensation with FY '18 salaries and total comp. So that was added since the work session. And then we've also added a few other information. On Slide 9, we also had a request to include number of teachers on each of the steps, as well as the percentage increase. So those charts have also been added to the presentation. And then on the following slide, it also includes some of the costing information that was requested at that work session as well. And throughout this presentation, you're going to notice that on the top-left corner, any of the slides that we've updated since the work session will have noted that it's updated for the February 1st, 2018 work session. That's how you could tell apart from the slides that we presented last Monday versus what's provided tonight. And then regarding some of the questions we have received, we know we are still working on a couple of the questions, but we did have a couple of questions regarding parent liaison funding for health or full retirement benefits and full benefits for the parent liaisons. We did pose the first question related to providing benefits for parent liaisons that work between 20 to 29 hours, and that was at a cost of $1.2 million. And then we also had a follow-up question about parent liaisons maybe working more than 25 hours up to 29 hours. And we're still working on that response, but the preliminary cost estimates are that for full benefits, it's $800,000, and just for health for those employees, I think it's approximately 31 employees, it's at $600,000.
All right. And with that, I will look around and see if we have anyone who wants to ask any questions about the budget specifically before we move on to any amendments that board members have. I think we've received one or two proposed amendments. But does any, do any board members have questions about the budget itself before we move on to discussing amendments? All right. Well, seeing no questions about the budget, I think we have at least a couple of amendments that have been proposed. And Mrs. Schultz, you have, okay, okay, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if we have on page, or on Slide 10, we have the cohort for the masters as a placeholder. I know that that has been worked on behind the scenes. Is there any kind of an update on getting together a cohort and beginning a masters cohort? I mean, how is the reception for the 400 and some looking? I'm not sure.
I think, let me see if Dr. Duran can-
Dr. Ramey, or-
So we, and we currently have three cohorts of teachers that have signed up for the George Mason Partnership. So it is, we had a good reception, and those cohorts are beginning now this spring semester.
So all three of the cohorts were full?
Yes.
Okay. And then are there indications from the balance of the people that are in that in that category of whether they're going to be able to try to take advantage of any kind of tuition reimbursement in any other way? In the other part, you know, because we have those, and then we have some in the other, other part?
Yes. We had today as a deadline, February 1st, for people to submit their requests, and so we have not yet tabulated all of that. But today, we asked people to let us know if they were going to be interested in taking advantage of tuition reimbursement, so we can get that to you after we tabulate what we have right now. We also, it's not a deadline today that they had to submit it, but we wanted to get a picture and a snapshot of how many were going to be taking advantage or requesting that. We also did a cross-reference to look at all of our teachers who already were in a program to get a sense of how many that was and how many that potentially could request tuition reimbursements. There was two issues. One, who might want to request and then get involved in a program, and then those who already were involved in a program.
But out of those that are in that category, in the 419 or whatever, what, what is the total, and it may be a ballpark, of the total that are signed up in the three cohorts plus the others who may have expressed interest? Is it a third? Is it a quarter? Is it a half? Is it two-thirds?
Since we haven't tabulated the second piece, I don't know the answer to that, but I can certainly do that because, again, we were just collecting that as of today. But I can get you that information, whether it's a third or a half. It's definitely a large number, but I don't want to give a guess without looking at the data, but I can get that to you.
Okay.
Ms. Palchuk?
Yes, just a quick follow-up on that. Were there people interested in the current cohort pools who were not able to register?
No, we are working with all of them that were interested to be able to do that. There were some that wanted to do a different program, and so we actually work with George Mason. So our third one is more a general program. We had defined them in a way that was really specific, so we got a lot of feedback that people weren't interested because of how it was presented, so we created a third one, and we're still working that out.
And by "general" meaning a more opportunity-
For example, we have teachers that were art teachers, PE teachers, music teachers, who wanted to be able to explore their particular area and not necessarily be focused on literacy or an instructional leadership perspective. And so we're working with George Mason to create that third one that would allow them some flexibility more generally around what their content area was. But there were some people who were not interested in the time commitment, and so we still have a lot of discussions that we're going back and forth with, with those 419 in particular.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I guess then we can move on to any amendments. Does anyone want to start us off with amendments that they plan to propose? Ms. Palchuk?
Yes, thank you. So this is co-sponsored with Ms. Hines, and the amendment would be to, I move to amend the main motion by A. reinstating funding of $245,933 to the Office of the Chief Academic and Equity Officer to support equity-related work, and B. increasing the county transfer request by $245,933. So the purpose of this amendment would be to continue the work of Dr. Duran, and I think several of us expressed the interest in agreeing that the equity work should be under the academic work, but wanting to ensure that there was funding for this additional portion of the office under the Chief Academic Office. And so we did pass the initial amendment for the one-time funds from the media review, I believe. And so this is an extension to ensure that the office continues to be funded in the main budget for 2019. And just to add a little bit, and we can speak to it more once it's up for vote, especially in light of, you know, what we aren't saying, we are waiting for March to hear what the proposal will be from Dr. Duran. At this point in the process, we want to ensure that the funding is there, should it be needed, and that the work of the office in our, in our large county can move forward. You know, I was in the meeting with MSAOC when Dr. Duran was there, hearing from the members about their ideas and input from staff, from community members of how, what his office should be doing to help improve and finally help us close our achievement gap and look at the equity lens in every aspect. And so I think it was pretty clear that there's quite a bit of work to be done, and what decision is made, we want to ensure that the funding is there for the work to happen, because that is how we on the board can help ensure that.
Ms. Hines, did you want to add to that? Okay. Any board members have any comments or questions for Ms. Palchuk? Okay. Go right ahead, Ms. Hines.
Sure. I'm sorry, if there's no one else. I just thought I'd wait to see what other board members. Mr. Wilson, you want to go first? Sure. Okay. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Just, just to clarify, the amount that you've included in the amendment, I guess since we're going to get a proposal in April, you said, or March, with how that would be utilized, how did you arrive at that figure? I mean, it seems like you could have said $400,000 or some other number.
So this is reinstating, I guess the goal of this, to clarify, is that in an effort, and I agree with many of the decisions that were made, to try to find areas where we could make funds, increase, decrease the ask. This was one area that used to be a placeholder that we had before Dr. Brabham, that was instated in office, the Equity Chief Academic, Chief Assistant Superintendent for Equity was in office, and this is how that was funded. So the idea is at this point, rather than eliminating that funding for the Assistant Superintendent Office, is shifting it from the Assistant Superintendent for Equity to the Chief Academic and Equity Officer. This is, yeah, so let me rephrase that. It's restoring the funding that was removed in the 2019 budget to that office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hines? Ms. Schultz?
Yes, so I guess the intent is that this would be as a placeholder, because we will get the detailed plan in March. So it's basically returning, as you had said, the funding that was in, in this year's budget at one time.
Yes, and I will answer, and then also give Ms. Hines a chance, if she would like, is, you know, especially in light of the One Fairfax policy we passed in collaboration with the Board of Supervisors this year. I know I personally, and Ms. Hines are not comfortable with saying we are presenting a budget with an ask that is now eliminating the equity work that was included in past budgets. So we want to make sure, yes, that it is a placeholder, that when Dr. Duran and Dr. Brabham come with their proposal in March, should they say, "We can do this work, but we can do it with $150,000", then we can have that conversation.
Right, that was my question.
But for this budget, we want to make sure that it is a placeholder.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
So your exact amount was $249,000, did you say?
I believe staff sent $245,933.
Wow.
And 28 cents.
28 cents as well. Okay, the $245,000, that is close to 0.1%? Transfer request-wise?
It's like 1/100th of a percent of the total, but it is 1% of the request, the increase. It's 1% of the increase, but it's 1/100th of the percent of the total county transfer.
Okay. So it will still be 4.9% transfer increase, okay. Because there's, somehow I thought there might be 0.1% making a 5%, and there's a difference between 5 and 4.9. And if, if I were to ask a step to find this funding from some areas, rather than asking for higher transfer, where would the potential sources might be? You want to give some thought?
We really haven't, we haven't done that review. I, I'm not in a position tonight to tell you what that would look like. I do think, I do think between now and the approved budget in May, that we'll be able to spend some additional time, as well as finishing up the actual presentation that Dr. Duran is going to present in March. So I'd rather not speculate, I'd rather have hard numbers for both our plan and to be able to spend a little more time to be thoughtful about where that would come if we get less than we expect.
So between, between now and February 8th, which is next Thursday, we adopt the advertised budget, I would like to have some conversation with a step about whether there's alternate resource to fund this.
Now, Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you. So, Mr. Moon, that's a question that I asked right away. You know, it's $250,000, can't we find it somewhere? But I think, I feel like this comes down to timing, you know, and our timing is a little bit dicey. And I, so my thought is that by the time we get to the next round of voting on our budget, we will not only be much clearer about what the office needs, we'll also have some clarity about where we can find the money. To me, this is largely about optics, you know, and as Ms. Palchuk said, here we are sending the Board of Supervisors a request for a significant increase, all the while advertising that we are nickel-and-diming our equity office, you know, $250,000 out of an enormous budget, where, you know, we've decided to pull it out at the same time, you know, that we are, we're One Fairfax, and we talk about how important our equity work is. I know, you know, my colleague on the Board of Supervisors, Kathy Hudgens, will be a hard sell for any more money for our budget if she sees that that's the kind of thing we're doing right out of the box. So to me, I think just for, I think we pull it out for now, have the more detailed conversation later, and I have, I really, I have to believe that we'll be able to find that much money in the budget by May.
Ms. Schultz?
So I, so I have a question. I'm looking in the, in the proposed budget on page 158, which has the School Operating Fund details. So if I'm reading this correctly, which I recall, we had 12 Assistant Superintendents, and then we backed out one Assistant Superintendent, so it's 11. So we would have to, if you're going to add this, you're going to have to put another position in there. Because what are you adding it for if we don't add the position, correct?
Well, Dr. Duran is going to present an equity plan at a work session in March. It's not going to be that position. It would be what resources does he need to advance the equity work? And-
So, okay, so that's-
So that's where that is. It's not that position.
So this, this is where I struggle with this, knowing that, because we can always add in money for more things. I have schools right now where we're not complying with our own regulation on class size because we quote-unquote "used up the reserve". And so when I think about, there's children sitting in classrooms that are over our guidance on classroom size, and we didn't find the money there. And so, I mean, if I want to find, you know, $250,000 or add $250,000, I, I want to buy teachers for classrooms that are over our existing limits rather than ask for additional money for something that we haven't necessarily defined yet. So it's somewhat moot, because I actually have had a trip come up, and unfortunately, I'm going to have to be out of town next week, so I won't be here for the discussion for me to, but I'm, I'm struggling with this, because we held it out, and it's in the budget now. I don't know where that money is right now. Basically, on a quarter review, we set that aside, and you, you kind of put it back into one of our many pots, I guess, by quote-unquote "expressing the savings", which was appropriate as we, I think, figure this work out. But I think an ask, when we have, when we're facing, I don't know how we ask this when there's overcrowded classrooms right now and other unfunded issues. So if I were here, I would have more questions between now and then about why we're asking for this instead of meeting the existing needs in the classrooms right now.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, thank you. So a reasonable question. I also am very concerned about class size. I am concerned about the parent liaisons, and, you know, Ms. Evans has brought that forward and will continue to. I think there are probably, by the time we get to May, there will be a lot of, there will be several things that we will want to find funding for before we get there, right? And I, but I, so I don't think we should look at every one of these items as a trade-off between that and something else. I don't see this as a trade-off between the equity work and class size. I don't. I think we need to be able to do it all. We know, there's no doubt that the office will need funding. We've talked about that. You can't just add a huge amount of work to the Office of the Chief Academic Officer and not give that person any support. You know, we know that there's going to be a need there. I, I don't know, but I think we may find that it's less than this amount that we're asking to hold out, you know, but we'll see. And, you know, when it comes down to it, before we get to May, I will be right there with Mrs. Schultz, fighting for the funding to make sure we don't break our rules on caps on class size. That's also, that's at least as important.
Ms. Keys-Gamar?
Yeah, I, I agree actually with both my colleagues. I, I see this largely as symbolic, that we are stating that this is important work, that we understand that we are in the process of evaluating how best to address some of the inequities that could be addressed by this particular office. But I don't believe any of us are stating that we won't hold each other accountable as to how those funds will be used. And certainly, we can use the argument that we have this problem, or this problem, or that problem, therefore, why are we considering another problem? Pretty much on any, you could pick a topic, right? So I, I see this as simply stating, you know, a policy that this is important to this board, and for that reason, I'm willing to support it with the understanding that we will have a more detailed understanding of how the funding is to be provided and to make sure that we're doing it in a fiscally responsible way.
So before we move on, are there any other comments or questions about the amendment by Ms. Palchuk and Ms. Hines? All right. I don't see anyone else, so I will discuss parent liaisons. I have asked a couple of questions about parent liaisons, and one, one of the answers is back, and one of them is almost completed. I think Ms. Quinn gave us the gist of it. As the board will remember, we worked very hard last year to start the process by which parent liaisons were being put on contract when they had a certain number of hours and provided with health insurance and retirement benefits. If you go to page 11, or Slide 11 of the presentation, you'll see the, the non-teacher scale definitions, just to refresh everybody's memory. The parent liaisons are on the Unified Schedule H, and they are one of several contracted hourly positions. And it also includes bus drivers, food service workers, and parent liaisons. I'm hoping that eventually this year, we can move us, we did make a significant change last year, and we did put parent liaisons on steps. And so that, that certainly was a step forward. But the health insurance kicks in when they have 30 hours or more. That's correct, Ms. Quinn, is that not? And so the question that I had asked was how much would it cost to extend that benefit to those making 20 hours or more? So between 20 and 29 hours on average a week. And that's, that's the answer that we got back in question one. So the second question I asked was how much it would cost to- So, the second question I asked was, how much it would cost to start at 25, 25 hours? So, with that, I'm still contemplating whether or not I will have an amendment next week. I'm going to be working with staff and, and talking to colleagues about it. I, I'm hoping that this year, we, we can continue to move us forward on that. And remind me, Ms. Quinn, I know you, you've told us this before at our previous work session, but health benefits start for the other hourly positions at, at what number? Is it 25 hours for bus drivers?
I believe for the bus drivers, it's 20 hours. And for the food service workers, it's a little bit less than 20 hours. I believe it's more 15 hours of contracted work.
Oh, 15 hours, okay. So, we, we have provided these benefits for some of our other workers on Schedule H, and I, I would hope we could move toward providing them also for, for the parent liaisons, who are so very critical to so many of our schools. So, I will be working on that, and I would welcome any comments or questions about, about that issue. Ms. Palchuk?
Yes, thank you, and, and thank you, Ms. Evans, for your continued advocacy and support for our parent liaisons, who are so important. I, I know you asked the question, because I'd like to see both how we support them, but also I know principals are often using their own funds to supplement hours. They have some that, you know, we know they work many more hours than they're compensated, and other principals, like here, who use some of their, their exchange to pay for them. Is that coming soon to get a better sense of, another angle is to see, can we, sorry, increase the number of hours we're giving schools for liaisons?
So, when we did the look back to FY17, we took into consideration all the funding that was supporting the hourly work of parent liaison. So when we determined the number of employees and how many hours that they worked, it did include the funding that was provided through the schools. And then, I think the second half of Ms. Evans' question had related to how many hours are funded by the various different funding sources, and that's the piece that we're still working on, so we hope to have that in the next day or two.
Okay, oh, good. Well, thank you. I, I look forward to seeing that, because I want to support them, and I, and I also want to make sure our schools are getting the support they need for the liaisons, and not having to make difficult decisions in order to fund that. Thank you.
Ms. Heinz?
This is not related to parent liaisons, although I am grateful to you also for continuing to keep us looking at, I mean, I can't tell you how many times I tell people, "Well, the parent liaison can help with that," or "That's why we have parent liaisons." And in fact, it's a really tough job, that is not a, just, it, it's a great job in some ways, but it doesn't, it just doesn't pay enough, and we know that, you know? We don't give them quite enough support. So, I just had a couple of questions, and I apologize if I can't find what I'm looking for in here. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Braybrand and staff very much for putting forth a budget that goes big, right? That says, "This is what we need," and it's, you know, it's significant, and we know that, and why ask for less than we need? I also think it's true and helpful that that ask is about teacher, about compensation, because, you know, we know that's the place where we are not where we ought to be, and it's very, very important. That said, we did hear the other night from, you know, some teachers, and I've heard personally from some teachers who are on that BA scale up at the end, and I just, I, I wonder, and I really, I apologize if I'm not up to date, and someone has already asked this as a budget question, but have we looked at different ways that we could, I don't know, somehow soften the blow for the last five years before they get to longevity?
So, I believe it's in March's work session, March 15th, we will be bringing you several options for those BA-laying teachers. Thank you.
Ms. Heinz, I also want you to know, I don't know if I've shared it with the Board, I know I, and I want to now. I am going to be meeting with all, I'm going to have a town hall with all of the BA-laying teachers prior to the work session in March. So they'll have an opportunity to meet with me face-to-face, share their concerns, and I'll have that feedback prior to the work session, where we bring you the menu of options. So I want the Board to be aware of that, and I'm going to really appreciate the opportunity, and from what I've heard, they appreciate that there's going to be direct time with the superintendent to really go over this issue and discuss it. So, that'll be happening shortly and before the March, and we'll be able to look at that feedback and assess how that might be, that feedback that we get from them might be a part of the menu of options that we bring you in March.
Yeah, thank you very much. Because, I mean, I think, having, you know, listened to and, and understood the salary research that was done, and, you know, if we really want to change these lanes, that means that we are going to, if we want to look more like the market, that means we top out a little earlier. And so it's during the, the changeover that these employees are feeling the pinch, you know? And so I, I get why we're doing it, but I think that's great. I, I know employees always appreciate that, being heard and having a chance for face-to-face. So the only other thing I was going to bring up generally and throw out there, is the, the activity fee. And I just kind of wanted to get a sense from anyone on the Board tonight or going forward, about how people feel about backing that out. It, it costs us $1 million to do away with it, and we, you know, we've already heard things that we'd like to do with that $1 million, right? And it, it was hard to get it in there in the first place, and last year, you know, we finally did, after we've talked year after year about what kind of, what kind of user fees we could reasonably do, and so we, we ended up with that one. I personally supported it, because, at least in concept, the idea of a one-time fee to cover all activities seemed relatively simple and relatively painless. And the, oh, I had another point I was going to make. I, so I, I just kind of wanted to see, well, and I guess also, and these are just anecdotal conversations, but, you know, we have, 75% of our, our people, residents in the county, don't have kids in the school system. And, you know, you often hear from them that, "Well, you know, how about user fees? How about some way of raising a little money from the people who use the system?" You know? So, I do understand the arguments on the other side as well. So, I just, I, I'm not thinking of doing anything about it now, but as we get closer to voting in May, it might be something that I would like to put on the table for us to think about and talk about. I, I appreciate, I had, that I had a great conversation with Dr. Braybrand, one-on-one, about this, and, and so, you know, if, if you'd like to respond now to, up to you, that's great. But if anybody wants to just discuss that now, I guess I'd appreciate it.
I think I'll let other Board members maybe share any feedback that they have, and then I'll make some comments afterward.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. I will, I'll comment on the fee, and then I have another question. I would just as soon not have to go back and, and return to a student activity fee, but Ms. Heinz is correct, once we get to May, and we know how much money we have, it's often at that time where we back into some of the very difficult decisions. I would, I, my own preference is to not have to use an activity fee. The other question is, many of you may be aware, at the General Assembly, they are potentially looking at adding ads on school buses. I'm not sure I support that one either, but that may be something else to talk about come May. I have a little heartburn over monetizing school buses, but at any rate, I would rather not consider fees until we get to May and kind of see how the situation is. I have a, a question regarding the staffing reserve. I know that we have used up our general positions, but are we okay for special education and preschool? Because in special education, we are taking in particularly our young children all year round. Are we okay with staffing to meet our IEP needs, if there are new IEPs, or particularly new preschool children? Are we okay?
We meet monthly HR and Special Ed, Department of Special Services, and we are looking currently at what additional staffing we need. We are being creative to meet our needs right now.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure, because if the community is, is watching, those are, those are needs we must, we must meet. And I know, in general, you watch that very carefully, and make sure that we were able, that we're able to meet that commitment. So, thank you.
Ms. Vanacana?
Thank you. So, on the issue of the student activity fee, so I've brought up that I think it, I think, I'm going to talk more to SAC about this, but it may discourage students, particularly freshmen and students who haven't yet been involved with extracurricular activities, from joining, because there is that $50 upfront cost. And then, on, in clubs like Model UN, I know that because I'm more familiar with that, there are hundreds of dollars of just conference fees. So then, when you tack on the $50 extra fee, it becomes a little too much for clubs and parents to pay for. And then, the idea of a user fee, like, the idea of the extracurricular activity as the user fee, I think, kind of ignores that extracurricular activities are just as much a part of a student's academic experience as classes. I think debate is as important as math class, and, like, as just part of the education, so I think that's a bad concept for us to base our fees on.
And Dr. Braybrand?
One of the interesting things, when we talk about one Fairfax and starting to apply an equity lens, and now, correct me if I'm wrong, Neha Rika, this year, with the implementation of the fee, every high school student is supposed to pay that fee at every school, with the exception of Thomas Jefferson, right? Because the activity fee, the activity period is embedded in your school day. Is that, is that correct?
I received an email, I believe, that we are going to pay the activity fee. And that is particularly odd, because it is part of the school day itself.
Interesting.
Yes. Is it not? I might be mistaken.
I believe it's dependent on the activity. So the athletics, yes, you would still have to pay a fee, as long as it's not within that eighth period, and when the activity is being held.
My, my overall gets a little bit to the, what is our opening statement to kids when they enter high school? And I do believe that athletics and extracurricular activities is the secret sauce of Fairfax County Public Schools, frankly, of American public education. We have so many of our kids in Fairfax participate in athletics and activities, and some of the deepest memories, when I talk to students that I've taught or been principal with, lots of memories from the classroom, but lots of memories from the Model UN trip, or from the chess club, or the debate trip, or being on the football field, or the basketball gymnasium. So I really believe, if we're going to be the premier school system in the, in the country, and have an equity lens, there's already fees involved when you play sports. My boys are already in high school, their freshman year, and I can assure you, as you start to play sports, there's lots of fees, transportation to go see them if you want to. We don't get to ride the school bus, if you want to go mom and dad to watch. Often, many of these events go all day. We're in track right now, it's from morning till, till evening. So, there are so many associated other costs for parents. I really see this as another barrier, and I really think we need to be about breaking down barriers and saying, "We want kids to take advantage of this rich, this rich opportunity that we have." I want to say to this Board, I wasn't here, and I understand, you had difficult decisions to make, and I respected them, and I still do. I believe that we need to, much as we've talked about other things, whether it's CIP or paying our teachers, I believe we need to have a school system, when it comes to sports and clubs, that says, "Everybody is open, and we don't need fees to be able, in this system, in this community, to be a part of it." So, those, those are the reasons I look forward to our continued discussion about it in the months ahead.
Ms. Schultz?
So, I wasn't really necessarily anticipating a future amendment of a future budget somewhere down the road, because I would have brought a bunch of different, frankly, a bunch of different topics. It wasn't for the activity fee when we passed it, and I'm not for the activity fee now, so I definitely want to get it out. What I don't want to do is be prematurely sort of jumping the shark on the conversation of what we may take out before we ask what we're going to ask, and haven't had, you know, the conversation in my community. I usually do citizen town halls after we've passed an approved budget, and it's out there for discussion, so that we start to get some feedback from the public about what we've placed out there as the marker. So that, so that being said, you know, anything that we can do to take off a burden that we've additionally layered onto parents, that frankly, I think, is, is a barrier to participation for, for a lot. And not just necessarily, you know, students that may have it defrayed in some way, if they're at a free and reduced meal status. I mean, there's some families who have multiple children. I mean, if, if you have several children and you're paying 50, it's not $50, you know, it can be, you know, hundreds of dollars. So I, I want to be cautious with that, and be mindful of what I said earlier. I am really concerned that we're only halfway through the school year, the reserve is gone, and kids are sitting in overcrowded classrooms. And I am going to be asking for some additional detail, now that this is out there, this approved budget will be out next week, to follow up with reprioritization of the money that we already have, on the issues we already have. And I would anticipate a down-the-road conversation in a successive budget discussion, when we have a closer understanding of what we're getting, that we have to address this. We said we were going to address it, we did address it, we put the money aside, and we didn't actually have enough money to address the magnitude of the problem at hand. And I, I think, frankly, we've made a promise, and we've failed to keep it, and I'm not happy about that. And the disaffected populations were told by us that this was our new regulation, and we've sort of shrugged our shoulders and said, "Well, the reserve is gone," and shifted the burden onto the individual principals to manage their master schedules and shuffle specials, and, well, you know, as long as they're not overcrowded in the homeroom. And, and I don't think that that's the answer. So, those are some of the types of things that, to my colleagues, that I would like to signal early on, you know, early heads-up, that I won't be having any amendments, obviously, at this point, but down the road, I, I am going to be looking for us to uphold our promise and our obligation to maintain our own classroom regulation sizes.
Ms. Vanacana, did you have a go back?
So, thank you, Ms. Schultz. I think that, like Dr. Braybrand said, having, not having that extracurricular activity fee is really important, for students to have that hour of Model UN, or debate, or math club, or whatever it is, not just so that they get the enrichment from that, but also is kind of a student wellness concern. We want students to be engaged with their school communities, and to feel like they're a part of different groups, so that they don't really feel like they're, you know, going to school and just going back home and doing homework for a few hours. And on the issue of removing burdens from parents, and making sure we represent this in our budget, I think we might want to consider putting in the full cost of all AP and IB exams into the budget. I know that that would make our budget go up significantly, but if we're trying to represent the burden on parents, and making sure we take that off of them in the new budget, I would, I would really like to see an amendment about that. I know today itself, I'd sat through an hour in an AP-laying class, in which all 30 of us were freaking out about whether we take the exam or not, because as seniors, we have, the, most of us have exhausted the six exam requirement, the six exams that were covered, and we're pestering our English teacher about how much were the scores last year, and mostly, I feel like students have this sense of panic about not being able to, not figuring, not knowing what they, what exams they can or cannot take. And I think this is a question for a leadership team, but do we have any data on whether students have chosen to opt out, and like, and how many numbers?
I, I think the deadline was today, actually. Mr. Wilson was just conferring with me, so we can look to get that data and have that for the Board as we move forward in some of these budget discussions.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Are there other Board members who wanted to, oh, Ms. Darnia-Kovacs?
I'm sorry, I, I just want to make sure I'm coming in at the right time. I want to speak to a potential amendment I might have. Is this the right time? So, just a little his, history, we all know it. So just a little his, history, we all know it because we've all been part of it. But a little over three and a half years ago, after realizing that many of our schools needed additional support for our newcomers, the numbers were growing, the needs of these students was greater than we'd ever seen. We were seeing students with interrupted learning, students with limited literacy in their own language, and limited numeracy along, and many of them were non-English speaking students. Once we saw that and we saw the needs were going greater, we had a forum work session about where other school systems had, had moved ahead quicker than we did. Ms. Evans, you were there with me, and Ms. Dr. Lockard, when we went and we took a trip to Texas to see what they did. We brought that back to the board. The board, the staff then very carefully did a crosswalk of what we were doing compared to what some other states were doing that were a little bit ahead of us in this. And we came up with some new programming, and we had pilot programs at both Lee and Stewart High School. Those pilot programs have been quite successful, and that's something that I want to see implemented across the board. What we were able to do with some of our other schools is, as a result of all of this analysis that our staff did, we were able to look at, at students, and we were able to change the curriculum a bit, giving them standard level credits in English and government to position them on a path to graduation. What we have not been able to do is get the other schools that need the services that Lee and Stewart are receiving in, in, in an equitable way. We haven't been able to provide them with the supports that we've seen, we've been able to do at Lee and, Lee and Stewart. In Lee and Stewart, we were able to get additional positions in bilingual guidance support. We were able to get additional parent liaisons, additional social workers to do the wraparound services for the social and emotional need, and also providing support to teachers with more professional development so these teachers could understand how to better work with these students. Last year, when I was the budget chair, we saw a, a blip in the amount of students that we saw. Ms. Evans, you know about this because many of them were your schools and my schools. And last year, between January and April, I believe it was, or, or March, we got in a total of 2,400 students who were Level 1 and Level 2, and those are the most needy students. At that time, the, the budget, and we were, we were well along in our process at that point in time. But I had still asked, we were still asking staff, and staff put together a great proposal for us to, to say, this is what it would cost in order to make the schools who have the highest, the next 10 highest schools, who have these high populations, and we need this kind of additional support for them to, to have equity and to ensure that these schools who have this high number of children with these needs are being serviced in the same way where we've seen success in Lee and Stewart. Staff put together to, to, again, to add some of those things that I talked about, that, all the guidance, mostly, mostly people, adding people to the mix for some of these needier schools. And at that point, staff put together a proposal, and the, the ask was 2.5 million to expand the ESOL pilot to 10 additional schools that needed this support. I would like to put a proposal together to try to work to make this happen. I realize we may not be able to get to all 10 schools this year, but at some point, we have to realize that the programs that we have out there are successful, but they are not being implemented equity, equally, or with equity across the board. So at some point, I will be continuing to work. I was able to talk to Dr. Duran today to make sure I had all of my facts straight to talk to you all tonight. And all of these things are still current, these students are, you know, still with us. We have not seen this year so far the big a rise as we did last year because we were very surprised by that rise last year. So we haven't seen that, and the staff continues to monitor that. But we still have these students with this need, and we want to be able to provide support, I want to be able to provide support to them across the board.
Before we, I have several people who want to comment on that, but I did want to get some clarity. At one point, as Ms. Darnakovacs said, we had a, a plan for expansion. Did, how far has that gone? Has it gone beyond Stewart and Lee at this point? Or is it just, is it still?
We have expanded to all of the schools for the curricular programming that you referred to in terms of students being able to be on that track, so they can take their standard English credit and their government credit now and count towards graduation. We have been able to do that, working through our master schedule. What we have not done is expand those additional supplemental support staff that Ms. Darnakovacs just referenced to any schools beyond those, Lee and Stewart.
I see. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Ms. Schultz?
So, can I ask, because I don't remember the details of some of these programs that we're planning on delivering, is, is there also a parent component to this in terms of acculturation and sort of that, you know, the engagement of what it is? Or is that something?
There was some family literacy, correct, Dr. Duran?
Yes.
And, and of course, the parents liaison, and then there was the, the thing called Strategies for Success, and maybe you can explain that better.
The Strategies for Success is for the students to take. But for the families, we do have family unification programs that we're working with through the social worker, and, but primarily, it's what Ms. Darnakovacs referred to a minute ago when we looked at family literacy, helping parents to understand what our system is like. And, you know, this is for many of them, they have, their children have not been in school perhaps, and so really getting them to understand what education is like here in the U.S.
So that's a, that's one component. I don't know how much of that is involved in this cost. I mean, certainly, what's missing, I think, from part of this conversation is, what's the cost if you don't do it? What's the cost if they're not in school? Like, what, you know, what is the societal cost? What is the impact in our communities? I know two of my colleagues just came from, you know, a very sad memorial, and, you know, keeping kids in school is important. Also, delivering the skills that they need in order to be successful is important. I, I'm sure that this is not a spoiler alert, you're not getting $2.5 billion.
That, that wasn't, but that was the ask to fully fund it in 10, 10 of our high schools, some of which last year received over, you know, 380 students in, in a four-month period. So I, I know what you're saying, and I'm, and I, and I appreciate, you know, that, that probably cannot happen this year, but I also need everybody to be aware that we need to incrementally fund this because we need to, so.
Ms. Schultz, to answer you on the parent piece, so what it means in the budget proposal that we presented was either eight of the schools would receive additional 30 hours a week for their parent liaison, and two of them was an additional 15 hours a week, as well as there was an additional either .6 or .4 allocation for social worker in those schools. That's in the budget.
I didn't realize that the, the, the wraparound service support was just more parent liaison. That, I don't, I don't think that that--
It's not. It's also the social worker, as well as the bilingual counselor, as well as the psychologist. So it was a combination.
That part's, that, that part's certainly more interesting. We decided, you know, some time ago, that a school within a school, under our previous superintendent, frankly, was the best way to deliver a, a lot of these services, particularly for students who have not only no English skills, English language skills or, or numeracy skills, they may not be literate or numerate in their own language. They may not have been in school at all. And so, that's certainly a problem. Previously, I had brought up, you know, our ability to seek federal funding for students that are here through no fault of ours and not on our radar. And it's interesting, just before this, two of us had a meeting manager meeting, and one of the things that I asked to be added to our next work session on mobility that some of you were interested in seeing, was actually a chart for the last three years of the monthly student membership, so that we can see, is this a trend that's changing over time? Is it, do we know? Because if we can predict, you know, while we may not need services necessarily at the first half of the year, if, through, through some data, we can help inform ourselves, while we might not be needed at the beginning of the school year, we may at, you know, the first quarter or something, say, hey, look, we can anticipate there's going to be some costs coming in the second part of the academic year. So I think that maybe that data will help us. We won't be able to make a decision with it now, but that information is coming down the pike to help give us a little perspective of what's happened over the last three academic years.
Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, thank you. So, thank you very much, Ms. Darnakovacs. I think sometimes we, you know, time passes and things kind of get lost in the budget and in the reality, and I appreciate your keeping a focus on this because it is a program that seems to work, and it does seem like something we need in other places as well. So I, it is a, you know, it is a significant ask if we're to do it. I mean, overall, it's not. I, I don't know, I guess I'd like to know more about for next week's vote, what you're thinking we would vote on, or is this something maybe to think about as we get closer to May?
Yeah, I think I, as I said, I had it with Dr. Duran, and I were able to briefly meet, I think, before next Thursday, I'd like to speak to you again to, to, you know, flesh it out a little bit because we were looking at, Dr. Duran and his staff did spend some significant time to put this together last year, but if we were to do it incrementally over a three-year period, what could we do? What could the cost be associated with that? And, you know, so, so hopefully, we'll be able to do that, and I'll be able to meet with Dr. Duran and bring you something. It, it is my intent to bring something next week because I feel if we wait in, later on into the process, again, like you said, it, it could get lost. And if we can do it in an incremental way over a certain year period to get to these top 10 schools that are experiencing the stressors that this brings, I would love to do that. And, and because it has been so successful at Lee and Stewart, they are, they are models, they are, you know, you walk into those schools and you, you see the, the positive things that are happening there as a result of this extra support, and I want that in more schools.
Thank you. So I know you'll keep in touch with us, and I, you know, I, I hope I can support what you bring forward. I, this, this, this brings to mind sort of where, and I don't know if this is true, but where we might have overlap between the different programs that are targeting our neediest kids and our neediest schools, right? This ESOL program obviously is successful. Project Momentum seems also to be successful. The Closing the Gap program, you know, that whole, I'm not, I'm not sure that we've seen this, I don't know, but it seems like maybe we haven't seen the same move in the needle from that. So I, I wonder, Dr. Braybrand, if, and maybe you're already doing this, but if at some point, it might make sense to look at all of this and find a way to, I don't know, find economies of scale by blending some of this, or?
I think our March discussion, when we talk about equity, will have some fresh eyes, some fresh perspectives on ways we might be able to tweak some things that we already do a little differently, and get the results that this board and this community is looking for. So I'm, we're busy working hard, getting ready to have those things. Now, it's not talking about cutting resources, it's about, can we realign resources strategically and actually even get better results for the kids that we're serving and the schools that we're serving? So we're looking forward to sharing that with you, and that will be a part of our presentation when we do equity in, in March.
Thank you.
Ms. Heinz, I just want to, just a reminder, because I, I think I wasn't clear, I didn't say this, this particular program is concentrated at the high school level. Project Momentum is a lot of concentration in the elementary and middle, yeah.
Mrs. Strauss?
Yes, I, I'm very much looking forward to the presentation in March on equity because I think that a lot of our questions will be answered when we can see how all current resources, as I understand it, are going to be utilized and packaged to meet all of our children's needs. On the one hand, it is, it is a relief that we did not get the influx this year that we got the year before. And we certainly are committed to making sure that we're serving all of our children the very best we can, and learning from successes and figuring out how to, how to spread that success. So I will look forward to more information and to see how we will be strategic and how we use our resources. I have no idea on a dollar amount of what might be a good idea or not a good idea, particularly without the March rollout of, of the ideas. So it is something we have to continue to keep our eye on. So I thank Ms. Darnakovacs for reminding us, because we certainly need to, to watch to see how we're going to serve those children. Thanks.
I want to just add a piece that's important. While we have not seen an influx in the num, total number, we're continuing to see a disproportionate number of students in Level 1 and 2. So that is really something to be considered as we talk about our equity issues, as we think about using our resources more efficiently, as realigning them is, while the total end count is not changing greatly, and in some cases, maybe even dipping, it's the number of students who are Level 1 and 2 that, as Ms. Schultz was saying, have little to no primary language in their own language, are not proficient, and then also now, obviously, in English needing our support to acquire that. So we have to dig deeper into the data there rather than just looking at, are numbers increasing or not? Which types of students are we serving, and do we need to serve better?
Ms. Corvus Sanders?
Thank you, and I apologize for being late. Ms. Darnakovacs, I really appreciate you bringing this back to the board because this is something that we talked about about 18 months ago initially. I know you've brought it up many times before that. But the intentional work that was done at the now-named Justice High School and at Lee has produced excellent results. What we really don't know is that when we rolled it out to all the other high schools, the 10 additional high schools, whether we've done some benchmarkings to see what the, what the delta is between the results at those two schools with the full array of services versus the schools that only focused on the Core Four. And I'd like to raise my colleagues' attention to something that is unfortunate hap, unfortunately happens at the schools that have significant numbers of kids that need these services but haven't been given the whole array of services or supports. What happens is that the local managers, our principals, are then forced to realign services within the school to best support them. And so, you know, hats off to our very creative and, and focused-on problem-solving principals and positive outcomes, because that's what they needed to do because they didn't, they didn't have any other choice. But at the same time, when they're pulling resources from other areas, that means that other kids are not getting the full experience that students in Fairfax County expect. And so I think that it is important to raise this as a separate standalone issue. I welcome your raising it. I look forward to more detail. I would also, I'm very glad, Dr. Duran, that you are going to come to us in March with a deeper dive and some out-of-the-box thinking on how to realign resources. And so I'm hoping that in your conversation-- And so I'm hoping that in your conversations with my colleague, that in the next week or so, that you will also look at, sure, doing more with less is the motto, it seems to be the motto throughout the new millennium for all sorts of organizations, but now's the time to also be willing to say we might need more resources too. So just take a look and look forward to your March presentation along those lines. But I do urge my colleagues that, to understand that in many of our schools, students are not getting the full benefit of services because they're being realigned, and nobody wins in that case. Everybody gets by, and we, we're better than that.
If I can just add to that, too, we did, we have been benchmarking to see how many credits students are earning, and in all of our schools, that has been a positive. Where Ms. Darnett-Kofax is coming from, and I think, based on our conversation, it's how are we supporting students, the socio-emotional challenges that they have as they're coming to us, being a student who's never been in school before? And that is the challenge that, to your point, Ms. Corvus-Sanders, that our principals, teachers, counselors are having to deal with. It's a much heavier lift dealing with those challenges that they have, but the academic part, where we've been able to get more and more students acquiring credits, we've seen a positive increase in many of our other schools. And we shared, I think it was in October, in our ORC report where we showed that those credits were really having a positive impact. But it's harder to do that without those supports. We know if we want to help educate, we will have to holistically approach that, right? It's not just about what happens in the classroom, it's about providing all of those skills and supports for families and for children who are coming to us with very, very different needs.
Thank you.
Mr. McAlveen?
Yes, I do just very want, briefly want to speak in support of Ms. Darnett-Kofax. You know, we had a, a model program at Stewart and Lee, and what, what I fear is the watering down of that program as it expands. So in whatever way staff can craft this so that we do not see that as we move forward, I would be happy to support.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Ms. Darnett-Kofax, just a couple of questions, just so I understand, the amount that your amendment would, would, would be in?
Well, you know, if you do just the quick math, right, if you do a three-year, if you do a five-year, if you do a five-year, you know, that's a half a million each year, it's $500,000, and you could bring two schools on each year. The, the numbers to, to get all of the personnel that help, you know, to have that holistic approach, were estimated, to bring 10 schools on was $2.5 million, and that was the work that was done in the spring of 2017. And that would, that would bring the 10 schools on, and in those 10 schools alone last year, oh, I don't have that average, but I can get you those numbers on how many children that would affect. I don't have that, that subtotal here.
Yeah, and, and maybe this is another question that you won't have the facts right at your fingertips, but how similar are, we have got 1 and 2 schools, how similar are 3 through 10 to those 2 schools at this point? In terms of, in terms of the ELL?
Numbers?
Yeah, in terms of the ELL population and?
I, I can share that with you. You know, you, the, the two highest ones are, it's not even Lee anymore, like the ones where the numbers came in, and I don't have those numbers, but last year, the, the kids that got, you know, 300 students, that was, that was Herndon High School, Lee Falls Church got 272, Lee got 190, Mount Vernon 160, Edison 103. So it's those kinds of numbers, the kids with the Level 1 and 2 that came in, you know, during that period, and I think that's, that's the main point, I think, that Dr. Duran stressed as well, is these schools have a disproportionate number of Levels 1 and 2, and the, the services and the resources that are needed are intense in those schools, and they have worked very well in the Lee Stewart/Justice High School. So that's what we want. We, we want to continue to move the needle in order to make sure that these children and their families are, are being served best by us.
And Mr. Wilson, I'll add on that, there are three schools of those 10 that actually have more than even Lee, which was one of our pilots. So they range anywhere, at least our last year's numbers, we need to rerun them, range anywhere from about 80, 90 to over 300, almost 400, but there are three that are definitely ones that have even more so than some of the ones that we piloted.
Yeah, I guess that raises a question in my mind, Dr. Duran, is to, if, if that was the situation and our pilot was so successful, why wasn't this built in as part of the budget proposal?
I, I think one of the, the issues when you come in new is to look at all the things that Fairfax County is trying to do to address the needs of kids. I don't deny that there are real needs in these schools around ESOL staffing. When I was first a teacher at Herndon, I actually taught adapt of the ESOL classes for, for history, and the kids had so many other issues beyond academic issues to deal with, and that was all being done within my own trailer out, and, out in the high school. So I am sensitive to those needs. Frankly, it's just about balancing priorities, it's very tough to do. You know, I'm certainly open to the work that school board member Darnett-Kofax will do with Dr. Duran to see what she will propose next week. I'm still hopeful, as we continue to go through the budget process, that we'll focus on excellence, we'll focus on equity, but as you, I've told you before, in the, the school system, we'll look at effectiveness and where we can continue to find efficiencies to try to do some of this work. But my prioritization this year, with all due respect, and I've been honest about it, has been about compensation for our teachers. We need to put great teachers in front of the kids, and really, this is just about trying to get more of those support staff folks to help. And I'm hoping perhaps that we'll see some additional help from the state. There's a proposal in the General Assembly right now to fund additional dollars for each at-risk kid that we have, and it was actually sponsored by downstate school divisions, but the reality is, and I've shared this with you all and the General Assembly members, if you looked at at-risk kids, need kids, we'd be the seventh-largest school division. So if the state funding formula is going to start to do that, and we can get some additional dollars, this could be something that would be perfect to be able. But that's a little bit, and, you know, I'm going through my first process with you all here. I think we're going to have a chance to see where the final numbers come in from our Board of Supervisors as we finish our work there, and I'm, I'm feeling very positive about our collaboration with them. And I'm feeling really good as I listen to Michael Malloy about some of the work that's being done down in Richmond, and we may be able to get a little help there to help us around some of these smaller pieces, and even really, like $2 million in a budget of over $2.5 billion, 2.7 billion or more. We're talking small numbers, so maybe there's still things that we can do creatively to try to address these needs, even if we can't get to it all in one year. The other thing I want to do that was already shared is, these are last year's numbers, I want to go back with Dr. Duran and run these year's numbers with the breakdown by that ESOL Level 1 and 2, where that high, high need is for families and for the kids, and maybe be able to help that inform our discussion at the school board meeting next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz?
So I'm so glad you brought that up, Dr. Braybrand, because that's what I had on my list, was to, one, ask if there's any feedback from Mr. Malloy about what's happening down in Richmond. If you recall, colleagues, I had run, for those who were there with our Board of Supervisors, I had pulled the numbers from Virginia Department of Education and sat at the table and ran the numbers real quick and found out, you know, we have a significant disproportional burden of ESOL Level 1 and Level 2 students compared to our student population than any other district in the state. And I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but this is close. I think we're about 14% of the student population for the whole Commonwealth of Virginia, but I think we have about 35 or 36% of those students. And that, that means to me that either the state government or the, and/or the federal government have to have a recognition that we, we have different types of needs in Fairfax County that are significantly out of proportion to our population. And I do think that, you know, even a little bit of additional funding out of the state will make a significant difference. You know, there, there's only but so much that we can do, and I appreciate, Dr. Braybrand, you're, you were very sort of thoughtful in your response to my colleague, because we want, we want to do this, but we also have to continue, I think, sort of an audit, if you will, not in the formal sense, but an audit of the source, the, the resources that we're delivering now, how it's working, how you continue to do it, how do you meet these unique needs that are unique to our jurisdiction, maybe than many other jurisdictions throughout the Commonwealth? How we effectively communicate those needs to our local, state, and, and federal bodies, and what, and what that means in terms of the data, the data in context, what's happening, you know, over the last several years, how is that looking? You know, I, I'm back to this J-Lark study, and I don't know if there's a, an update, and maybe Mr. Malloy can, can touch base down in Richmond, but we had a J-Lark study that showed a tremendous egress from around the rest of the Commonwealth to here. So we're importing other Virginians into Fairfax County on top of it. So there's, you know, fewer students in other jurisdictions around the Commonwealth and more here, which is even a greater, I mean, you know, and I don't know what the student population to parent population is here, but we, we have a lot of students here that I think that maybe we're not expressing, you know, the need for, and this creates the opportunity for us to advocate for specific monies for specific needs, to, to drive things like at the elementary level, the, the programs that we have effective there, and then create and, and maintain our expansion of our high school programs. I'm wondering, when this came up, somebody said it, and I apologize, maybe it was you, Dr. Duran, in terms of this ask, and you said, you definitely had to concentrate this budget development around compensation, but, and maybe I'm channeling Ms. McLaughlin for, for, for a moment, has there been a increased communication from our principals about the mental health and wellness of students and our proportion of our positions to meet the needs of the students? Because I don't know, in our increase of our student population, I forget for this year, if that was predominantly in high school, or I think it's kind of spread out, but I do, do know that we get a kind of a big tick up in 9th grade. And just, you know, some things that have been happening here recently, you know, this makes me wonder, you know, are we, I know we're off on our proportions of the support services for students and the schools, and we'd always like to have more, but has there been any conversation about that? Because that could be something maybe I would, you know, in absentia, you know, have somebody else offer, you know, some dedicated services to mental health and wellness.
Ms. Schultz, our greatest challenge right now has been keeping clinicians. They've been moving out of the area, they've gone on long-term leave, so we're looking to support, again, finding creative ways and contracting out to help support the needs of our, our schools right now.
So we're struggling to fill the positions we already have, never mind grow, grow the positions?
That's correct.
Okay, that's a topic for another day.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Just a couple of questions first, and then, and then I have a, I have a comment to make to my board members. So 1%, 1% increase in the transfer is 19.7 million, correct?
Correct.
So if I'm not mistaken, that 4.9% transfer that we are asking is 90 mil, about 91?
96.9 million.
96.9 million. Is that exactly 4.9, or is that 4.9 something?
It is 4.93.
4.93. I am trying to find a way to keep it under 5% because we do rounding up of numbers, we're rounding it down. If we go beyond 4.95, it will be seen as a 5%, 5% request.
That's correct.
So with a 0.2% that potentially, that we may have room for before going over to, going to 5%, that 0.2, 0.2% is, how much is that?
Approximately $393,000.
Okay, so we have $250,000, about $250,000 required for Ms. Perchek's amendment, and we have anywhere between $600,000 to $1.2 million possibly for Ms. Evans' contemplation, and about $2.5 million for Ms. Darnett-Kofax's. If you add up all those numbers, it could be as much as 3.4 million dollars. Correct? And $4 million represents what, 0.2?
I don't think that Ms. Darnett-Kofax is asking for 2.5 million.
That's over 5 years.
Well, I don't know what I'm asking for yet, but I, you know, that's the total cost to fund 10 schools. So if you want to do the high end, that's fine. You want to do?
I'm just trying to see, you know, because I just want to caution my board members that how that's going to be presented. We're going to be seen by a, a funding authority, and also let's remember that, you know, last week, I was very happy to support something that I worked with, Ms. Evans, asking for another $50 million of a CIP money, cash flow, which has to come out of that service. Unless I'm mistaken, in order for the county to be able to support additional $50 million, that, that's about another $5 million of that service payment is required. So from their perspective, it's going to be another $5 million out of their operating fund availability plus this request. So I just want to have, you know, we still have a time. I'm not saying that I'm not going to support those amendments. That is why all that I ask, whether, whether we have considered, board members who are thinking about proposing, or proposing these amendments, consider alternate way of sort of funding these different proposals? I mean, I am in fully, I mean, I, you know, I can go back to those years where we asked for 11% and 15% when times are really good, really good. Yeah, I'm not saying that time is not good this time either, but let's consider that, how that's going to be seen, because as, as a budget committee by chair, working with Ms. Evans, I want this to be well-taken by, not only by the supervisors and also taxpayers. That's where my, I want to give, I want to ask my board members to give a little more thought between now and, and Thursday next week to see?
I, I just, I would like to comment on my particular portion since you were, you know, Mr. Moon, we worked together on the budget last year, and this was part of the ask later on, so this would not come as a surprise to the Board of Supervisors this year.
Did you have further comment, Mr. Moon?
That's all I'm, that's all that I'm asking at this point.
All right. Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, thank you for the math, Mr. Moon. You, so you raised a question, and I just want to ask it. If, when we tell, we, we talked to the, our colleagues on the Board of Supervisors about what we are asking for on the CIP, is it not reasonable for us to say that, I mean, and I know they have capital needs as well, but we are not necessarily asking for that amount to be fresh money overall for the county? money overall for the county? They could choose to spend less on their side and give it to the school system, right? I don't think that's likely, but that's a choice they could make, right? So it doesn't necessarily have to cost them $5 million a year extra.
I agree, I agree. I mean, it's, however they do, we are asking for another $50 million, but I'm just trying to see what they're going to argue, how they're going to argue.
Ms. Strauss?
I believe there is a budget question that has been submitted but not answered yet, asking for a breakout of the $15 million to cover the increase in student enrollment, because I would imagine part of what is embedded in there, maybe it hasn't been asked, no, because what would be embedded in there would also be the acknowledgement of student need, at least based on the projection, because what we continue to hear is that as our student enrollment is growing somewhat modestly, we are seeing children with greater needs. So I would presume that what is in the budget is a recognition of greater need as well, which would be ESOL, which would be FRM, which would be special education.
That's correct, based on projections.
Right. So some positions that we are hoping would be there, certainly not everything that Ms. Darnak-Kofax is talking about, because that is a different look. But again, embedded in the, what is already in the budget for student enrollment, will be some increase in some positions based on the increased need of students.
That's correct, but mostly teachers.
Yes, but it would be, right.
But there would be additional positions based on those shifts in demographics. That's correct.
Right, but it would be, in some cases, specialized teachers to serve children with greater needs. So, right.
Yes.
So that will be there.
Ms. Corbett Sanders? So it strikes me that there may be some overlap in the discussions we're having regarding the equity piece and this piece for additional resources for our high ELL schools. And I'm wondering if there would be a way of having a conversation, when you talk with Dr. Duran, and I presume that both Ms. Palczek and Ms. Darnak-Kofax are both speaking with Dr. Duran, about how maybe we can marry some of this together and have some synergies between the two actions. Ms. Hines?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that that's not a question I asked before and maybe was not clear. I think I asked a question that sounded similar to me, and Dr. Braybrand responded that when we get the update in March, that there will be a look at all these different ways that we are meeting our needs and closing gaps to find efficiencies.
No, I understand that's what you asked. What I'm actually talking about is work on the board amongst our colleagues, that, you know, I understand that Dr. Duran is doing much of what you have suggested, which is that, you know, doing a fresh look, a deep dive, seeing where we can have some operational efficiencies with a focus on excellence and outcomes. What I'm asking is slightly different, which is that we have a quarter of a million dollars, $250,000 is what you're asking, correct?
Yes. It's approximately $250,000, correct.
That is to support our equity programs. We have a range of between a half a million and 2.5 million to also support equity programs as far as the equity of experience at each of these schools. And so what I'm asking is, is there a way, you know, is that double counting? Or is it a way that we can have some synergies between the two? And that's something that I'm not in the position to do. I don't believe that any of us at this table tonight are in the position to accomplish it. It's more of an encouragement that since both Mrs. Darnak-Kofax and Ms. Palczek are working with Dr. Duran, that perhaps you wrap in that thought process.
So I also want to thank Ms. Darnak-Kofax for keeping this a very, it's a very important move forward. Our programs at Stewart and Lee have been highly successful, and we do need to be able to replicate them at other high-needs schools. I did have one question, a follow-up for Dr. Duran. At some of my schools last year, we did get a huge influx in January, February, and March of ESOL ones.
Last year, yes.
Last year, at our high schools. Did I understand you to say that that has declined in January of this year?
Yes.
Significantly?
Yes.
So we're not, okay. So the numbers...
The overall number, but not necessarily the number of students that have Level 1 and 2 needs.
That have the highest needs, because that, we were seeing both high numbers last year and extremely high numbers of the very high needs students.
Correct.
So be that as it may, we still, not only because of last year's students, but the year before and the year before that, we have a number of very high-need students and with very special needs, we've succeeded in an excellent way at Stewart and Lee, and with the expansion as well. So I hope we can move forward with that. And I do think that there's, as somebody said, synergy between the three amendments that we have been talking about. Again, I don't know where I'm going to go with my parent liaison amendment, but they are critical. They're critical to the equity piece, and they're critical to helping our ESOL students as well. So I certainly support where you're going. I hope that, I'll look forward to seeing, you know, the specifics of your amendment. With that, are there other amendments that people want to talk about? We certainly have an opportunity next week at the board table when we're taking up the budget to make overall comments and offer other amendments. If you do have more questions, please remember to get them to staff just as quickly as possible so they have enough time to answer them, and please work with them to craft your specific I want to thank Dr. Braybrand for bringing us an excellent budget proposal, and certainly Ms. Quinn and all of the budget staff. And Ms. Quinn, thank you for your many, many years of service. I will be saying that several times, I think, before we finally let you go, but you've done excellent work, and again, tonight. Dr. Braybrand, did you have any wrap-up comments you wanted to make to us?
No, thank you. I want to thank the board. I thought it was a very thoughtful conversation tonight. A lot of good issues were raised, and I think our eye is on the right things. We want to do the right things for our kids. We want to make sure we're bringing all their needs in the classroom. We want to recognize things outside of the classroom, that socio-emotional piece that I think frankly the state is finally actually realizing, that standards of quality has to be about the academic but also the socio-emotional piece. So I think we're starting to have the kind of conversations this community expects us to do, and we're having the kind of budget. And it is an aggressive budget, as Ms. Hines said, but it's the budget that we need for our kids and for our county. And I continue to be very, very encouraged as we interact with the county staff, which we are doing frankly on a weekly basis now, that we are really working collaboratively with them, and I think there's going to be positive energy and action as a result of that. And I think your conversation tonight is another step forward in that work. So thank you very much, Ms. Evans.
Thank you. And with that, this work session is adjourned.